We've never really had that large.
Outplaced tuitions went up one hundred and forty-seven, six hundred and ninety-five. Again, those are tuitions that are given to us from the outside sources. And there was roughly about a three to six percent increase in outside placement tuitions as well. Supplies for special ed, sixteen thousand twenty-four, and professional development was seventeen hundred. Our health insurance, as I mentioned, we have a three point five percent increase in the state partnership plan. We have regional pricing which takes the cost, the state takes the cost of their medical expenditures and allocates it throughout the state. And different areas have different pricing. Like Bridgeport area would have less of a pricing increase than us because there's more doctors in this in the smaller area. We have a small, we have a large rural area and our cost of medical expenses are up. So therefore, we have actually a point five percent increase. So of the three percent of the three point five, point five of it of it is because of our regionalization pricing. And that comes from the state. That's determined by the state calculation. The two hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar increase in this category includes the hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars that we are requesting as a final closeout for the internal service fund from that service fund that had a balance several years ago. And the auditors have recommended that we use that fund. And this will be the last year. I put a hundred and sixty-two thousand, but when we reconcile it, it will be a hundred and whatever, sixty-two and some other dollar amounts, but we'll balance that out based on interest and everything. It will be closed out at the end of the year that we are talking about in our budget. From year to year, we've also increased seventeen participants. And that was mostly because we have spouses of our people coming, of our staff coming on our plan, either because they've lost their jobs or lost their insurance from their from their current employer, whether it was COVID related or not, we, you know, they need to, they need coverage. So we put them on our plan, which also includes in some situations, the children of those of those family, family members. And we had a couple of our younger teachers that were still on their parents' plan till the age of twenty-six. We had a couple of them who have aged off their parents' plan and are now on our plan. So that increased our budget, the health insurance section of the budget, two hundred and thirty-four thousand eight thirty-one. Transportation, DATCO is, we are in the process of negotiating our DATCO contract. This, the year we're in now is our final year of our contract. And if you recall, in our contract, every year we had a hun, well, there was a varying amount. But in the last three years, it's been a hundred thousand dollar vehicle credit that the DATCO company used to purchase the vehicles, the buses when they took over five, four years ago. So this is the last year. So any contract that we negotiate from here on in will have, will automatically be increased by that vehicle credit that we found. Maintenance, again, because of the fifty-nine thousand dollar cut that we did last year, we were trying to restore that in this year's budget as well as contractual increases for the custodian. They have a union contract, so their increases were fourteen thousand seven seventy-four. Repairs and maintenance are eighty-two, two forty-five, and supplies are fourteen thousand five hundred increase for the total amount of the increase in the maintenance department of a hundred and thirteen thousand one dollar. So basically, our breakdown of increases are the tuition is a hundred and sixty-six thousand, which is not only the academy, we also pay tuition to VOAG for anyone that, any one of our students that wants to be in the VOAG program. We have to allow them the ability to take, to take advantage of that program. QMC and other high schools such as Putnam, Putnam High School, we are, we have a contract with Putnam High School now for our students to attend there. I went through basically every category, the special education, the elementary school, the increases that we had in, in those categories. But most of our, of the increases in this budget of a one, we have, we are in total requesting one point, one million four hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and ninety, which is a seven point seven percent increase over last year. And so that, that was basically our budget. As I said, they're, they're on the website. There's paid copies of it, of the budget over there as long, as well as this budget presentation. And so we're at the, the public hearing tonight. We have a board of education meeting on Thursday, of which we will be discussing budget, wherever the, the Board of Finance wants to tell us where to cut. And we will also be discussing more information, although we do not have a lot more information of our American Recovery grant that is coming. We don't have, you know, we don't have a lot of information. The, the government just gave us a S R three, the S R two grant, which I am writing and is due on the nineteenth. Those expenditures were already prior to removed from, from this dollar amount. But there may still be some that I can write into that grant from the expenditures that we had here. But we're mostly, mostly waiting for the American Recovery Act to say, what is it that we can do of our present teaching staff, our present expenditures that we can put toward that grant? But again, we're, we're still up in the air as far as the knowledge of, of what we can exactly do with that account. Like I said, the information is over there or on the website. If the capital part of our grant are submittal to the Board of Finance is also our five-year capital plan. I can go through that quickly. The technology, we always have a thirty thousand dollar request every year for technology. Last year, one of our grants supplied us the ability to purchase one, the one year of a four-year contract for our iPads. We could have never done distance learning or hybrid learning without that grant, without that ability to be able to purchase the iPads for the district. So thirty thousand dollars is now more important because we have to upgrade our infrastructure continually upgraded as we get more use from our Wi-Fi and new technology comes out. There's about thirty thousand, if not more, that we have to purchase every year. The Woodstock, and we've talked about this as far as the wording of this particular next line item. The Woodstock education funding of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, again, this is what we initially presented to the Board of Finance over a month ago. So we're discussing where, where to make the changes on that, if we're going to make changes, if we're going to make year one, two, and three changes to that, to that particular line item. But this is what we originally presented to the Board of Finance. We're also looking to repave between the, the brick building and the main building at the elementary school. We have the boiler room has a drainage issue that comes back, reoccurs, so we would like to try to fix that. The intercom system, we desperately need to do that. It's twenty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty-four. That's our intercom system where we call down to the classrooms or we dismiss students or we call parent. But parents come in and they're picking up their child. At the, at the elementary school, it has, it is on its last leg, so we need to replace, replace that. The generator is on there. One of the problems when they're running, the reasons why a lot of our issues go on at the middle school is because it does not have a generator like this one does. So whenever we lose power, which is quite frequently, the power goes down. And when the power comes back up again, it sends a surge like it would at your house. It sends a surge to some of our equipment. And, and most of the time, some piece of some equipment will be fried and we will have to replace that. So if we spend the money in, in purchasing a generator, we hope that that will alleviate all of these issues because we do not have that problem in this building, because we do have a generator that automatically kicks on when the power goes off. And so those kinds of issues do not occur at this school. We have floor, floor and ceiling repairs in, in the elementary school. Some of the tiles are cracking, mostly over the section where there is, if anybody's familiar with the elementary school, there is a section of the school that has a pit underneath it. And sometimes it's, it has water leaching into it. And that sometimes causes condensation, which is kind of peeling up to our floors. And we've noticed that in the most recent few months, that the floor below that section in the hallway is, is tending to crack a lot more, so we're going to have to do something with that. So that item, as well as the encapsulating the crawl space, that's what we're talking about, the crawl space area. I don't have a clue how we're going to do that because it's under the building and everything that we would do to that section would have to be done by hand, most likely, because I don't think you can get a piece of equipment in there. But I'm, I'm not a contractor, so I don't really know. But, so we're putting money in to hopefully start addressing that issue. At the middle school, we're talking about replacing the lockers, only we're holding that off for another year. We're still evaluating what size the locker should be. Some, the present ones don't fit all of the books that we presently have, but because of the iPads, will, we need to have the same type of books. So we're still evaluating what those lockers should look like, the size of the lockers. Parking lot resurfacing, if you go around, you see very patches of where we patched and paved some sections. And some of those are just, are just crumbling around the seams. So we either are going to have to fill in the seams and do a whole, or do a whole repavement job. So we've kind of spread that over two years to do some surfacing, but that's not till year two. The, again, the intercom system in this building, although a little bit better, is still failing. So we, we need to replace that as well. We have the maintenance garage that's out here. When you go out there, we did a painting job on it over the summer, but it really needs new exterior paneling. And we have a estimate in there of about seventy-five hundred. It may be a little bit more. But, but we, we should do something with that building. It, it's just a new surface for that building because that houses. And we actually need to put a little lean-to, if you notice out there, our pickup truck is, the pickup truck right now is on one side, but the, the sander is on the other. We need to put a lean-to so that we can keep all of that equipment under cover during the winter and during the summer from the sun. The most important thing, though, is boiler beside the, the generator at the elementary school is the boiler HVAC system in this building. This week also, we had a problem where the furnace didn't turn on. And when that happens, we have to call our, our people over. And I don't know what the reason was for it this time, but we had a, we had them out here again. This is a newer system than our elementary school. However, the newer system involved components, electrical components, which now they can't surface, they're obsolete. So a newer system didn't necessarily make it a better system, unfortunately. This is going to be a very costly project in this building that we may end up having to bond out because it's, that's, replacing our, our boiler and HVAC system is not going to be cheap. And one of the other items is air conditioning, the grades five and six level. If we do the right thing, we could probably have an HVAC system that will do that air conditioning of those floors as well. We have seventh and eighth right now with little, what they call Mitsubishi units. But we would like to do grades five and six as well. We also have in there replacement of carpets for the media center and the music room. And during COVID, we took, we, we paid somebody to come in and professionally clean those carpets. They hadn't been cleaned in a very long time. And it has rejuvenated both of those rooms carpets. So we can, we can probably hold off on replacing those carpets for another year or two. The athletic field, if you go out there, the softball and the soccer field, the soccer field does have drainage around it, but apparently when it gets really wet, there are sections of that field that render the field unusable. And we have to go, either go to the, the field of the company of the school that we're playing or we have to find another field to play that soccer game. And that's sometimes, we only know that just minutes before the game starts. So that has been causing a problem, so we need to do some sort of rearranging the, the drainage or, or whatever. The softball field, we have drainage under there, but the dirt has, has eroded away in certain sections of that softball field where we're seeing the filter fabric. So we need to put some more soil down on that section of the, of the softball field. So those are about fifteen thousand dollars worth of repairs. And that's all I have for my capital expenditures.
I guess at this time, we'll call if there's any questions from anybody in the audience that has any questions they'd like to ask Janice. I'm sorry, Suzanne, I, we need to have everybody that wants to ask a question, if you might, coming up just to the podium and then taking the microphone, just so that people at home can hear your question.
No.
Thank you.
I can use this. I know that last year you or we, it was a non-recurring expense. It wasn't in the regular budget. So has that now been folded into the tuition number?
No, it's still part of the capital.
Maybe Janice, if you might, coming over. Who gets the kinks out of this?
It is still part of the capital, non-recurring, the five-year capital plan. That is a education funding that we were talking, that I was talking about earlier, the two hundred and twenty-five thousand is in the five-year capital. It's not in the tuition number.
So we're planning to do the same thing we did last year, which is to pay?
Right now, yes.
Okay, that was my question.
Thank you, Suzanne. Is there any other questions or comments from folks in the audience? Harry and Carla, do we have any from the Zoom audience? I see one. Janice, I think we'll probably need you this. Maybe, yes, it might be, why don't we stay back here just so we won't both break our necks tripping over that wire? Okay, can you? Greg, go ahead. Do you have a question?
Okay, yeah, I'm unuted now. You got me? My, my question is, I didn't see this. How much is the tuition cost at Putnam High and how much is the tuition at the academy? Her student?
The tuition at the Putnam, we have a contract that says it's seventeen two fifty, I think. No? Twelve thousand five hundred? Okay, twelve thousand five hundred. And the academy tuition is fifteen thousand two fifty.
Twelve thousand five hundred and fifteen two fifty?
Yes.
Okay. Interesting. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions, Carla, from any of the Zoom participants? Okay, Greg?
Keeps going back to mute. So do you have any students that are signed up to enroll at Putnam?
Two.
So far? And that's been, that's been announced to the community, I assume? Although I haven't seen it? Yeah. Okay, all right.
In the, in the eighth grade, they have a whole choice of where they can go and they, they get versed on where they can.
Do you, do you have any idea how many are going to Ellis Tech?
No, I don't.
If you don't, that's okay. That's a freebie, you know?
That's free, so I, yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't know how many are at Ellis Tech.
Okay.
I can get that for you, but I, I don't have.
That's okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from any Zoom participants? There's a lot of mutes and a lot of.
Yeah, everybody's muted. You gotta unclick it, right?
Yep. If any of the Zoom participants were to ask a question, we'll need to have you unmute your microphone. And you can turn on your camera and wave your hand if you feel comfortable doing that.
That's right.
Hey, we're scrolling through the listed participants. We don't see anybody else. Okay, so I guess we don't have any other questions from any of the Zoom participants. Any other questions from any of the audience participants for Janice Thurlow? None? Okay, thank, thank you very much, Janice. Okay, now we'll call First Selectman Jay Swan. He'd come up. Should step over the wire there, boss.
Good evening, everyone.
Is there a volume control on this? No, it's okay. I just, I just. Test one, two. I have a big mouth, so I'm just gonna talk. Actually, do I need this? Can the Zoom people, can the Zoom people hear me? Greg? Oh, I'm getting a thumbs up, so I'm gonna do away with this, if I may. You all can hear me, you sir in the back row? Good, okay, fine. Okay, I just want to preface this by saying I have made this presentation to the Board of Finance before. And I just want to say that this is based on, the figures tonight are based on the requests from the various department heads for general government. We have not, the Board of Selectmen has reviewed it, but we have not made cuts. The reason for that is last year, we went through it and made what we thought was a reasonable budget that we presented to the Board of Finance. And yet they, at that point, came back to us and asked us to cut more, which we did. So for a number of reasons, I felt it appropriate just to present the general budget based on what the requests were. Because I thought the Board of Finance and you, the general public, should be aware of what the various departments feel they need to meet the needs of, of the public in town. I know that one of the members of the Board of Finance was very disappointed in me personally because I didn't prioritize it. And my feelings were hurt. But this seems to be the season in the last couple of years of hurt feelings, so I guess I'm welcome to the club. That said, I'm gonna go through just the significant increases and tell you how they are and where they are and that sort of thing. We will be meeting, the Board of Selectmen will be meeting to review this in addition to the Prop forty-six figures on Thursday of this week. So that will make a difference. Okay, first of all, page one, salaries. This is increase in salaries. This is for the Selectmen's office. And that includes the department head, the second selectman and the third selectman. All time, also full-time salaried staff, human resource and office manager and part-time executive assistant at twenty-four hours per week and up to an additional five hours per week to process pistol permits. Also included in this figure is advertisements for job, jobs, town meetings, legal notices, et cetera. Any communications that the town has, signs and miscellaneous dues and conference fees for various conferences, seminars and organizations that we belong to. Contractual services, NICOG, Northeast Department of Health, KIG and other organizations that we are involved with. Total amount for that is a hundred and ninety-seven thousand and twenty-nine dollars. On page two, we have increase in salaries for the assessor. That is, the request was two to three percent. One thing I should also mention, we're in the process of contract negotiations as we speak with both the Teamsters and AFSMI. Those have not been resolved. I would expect that we will have an increase in salaries for those individuals. Also, as you may or may not be aware, if a union member gets an increase, a percentage, it also goes to general, non-unionized town employees because that's fair. And that's what the town has traditionally done, and I feel it's appropriate. One of the things we're covering, in fact, you may be aware, it's already just started, reevaluation in Woodstock. We contract with a company through NICOG to do that. For the department head, we have the assessor. We have the assistant assessor at twenty-nine hours per week. We have seasonal staff on occasion, not all the time. We have state-required notices that have to be posted. There's dues, conference fees, assessor associations, meetings, training and fees for a CCMA recertification. Contractual services through NICOG, we have GIS mapping. DMR Direct, we can't, well, we don't contract, but we work with DMR to get assessment of various motor vehicles for residents in town. Also, we may go to an outside appraisal service. Books, periodicals, assessors, handbook revisions, NADA pricing guides, supplies, general supplies for the office. And also, AFSMI, union negotiations could be taken out of contingency if not finalized before the referendum. The total amount for that will be a hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-one. Page three is the tax collector. That includes the salary for the department head, full-time assistant at thirty-one point five hours a week. That was recently filled and is twenty-nine hours a week. Sixty hours per year to cover January and July tax season, which is extremely busy. Is mileage reimbursement for meetings, conferences and banking. State-required notices for publication. Dues for various professional organizations. And that's it. That's a hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and seventeen. There was a request of an increase of salaries, two percent. I should note that as of last week, there's one full-time assistant tax collector, which includes benefits. There's no overall increase to staff. The increase will be reflected on another page in the pension and insurance page. That's going to resolve having two part-time employees. And that was the choice of the tax collector, to have one full-time as opposed to two part-time folks. On page four, under finance, there's no increase in salary for the department head, which is the finance director. There's a two percent increase for staff and there's a stipend for part-time elected treasurer up to sixty-five hundred dollars. This was just settled last week, as a matter of fact. Barry Shed was appointed, had been recommended by the Republican Town Committee, was appointed by the Board of Selectmen as our full-time elected treasurer. He will, not full-time, I'm sorry, part-time. He will be running next November when that position is up. We have a bookkeeper assistant treasurer. The position is based on thirty-three point five hours per week plus five hours per month for training, audit and additional meetings. As you can imagine, because it's financial, certain times of the year, like the tax collector, it's extremely busy in that office. Dues and conferences, memberships, auditing fees, professional audit, which is done yearly. And that total is a hundred and sixty-six thousand and seventy-two dollars. We go to page six, which is election. Increase in part-time staff, possible extra poll workers for local elections due to COVID restrictions. They're requesting thirty-five hundred and eighty dollars. Again, we don't know what's going to be happening in the next year or so with COVID. We're gradually trying to, as we are tonight, we're trying to gradually get back to normal. We don't know, you know, what's going to be happening with vaccines, with surges, et cetera, et cetera. So again, the registrars, we're trying to be proactive for the coming year. There was an increase in materials and supplies of two thousand and fifty dollars. On page eleven, insurance and benefits. Social Security, Medicare was derived from a salary increase of seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. There's a new cyber policy, which is, as you know, is a major issue nationwide. We'll be getting a cyber policy. It's gonna be shared with the Board of Education. That'll be $7,500 for our share. That's still being worked out. Pension will increase from 14.95% to 16.44%. It represents an increase of $36,113. Includes full-time tax collector assistant and adding one more highway driver, laborer, and assistant mechanic. Health insurance increase from $40,538, and that's a 3% increase plus cost for additional full-time staff not using reserve funds. Also, under insurance, the Teamsters Union, A7 Health, would be $23,192 increase, and that would be adding a new driver, laborer, and assistant mechanic. Land use on page 14. You would know it as the zoning officer, inland wetlands. We're changing that. It's gonna be the land use office. We're in the process of recreating that. We're gonna have a new department to address all the land use needs in town. They'll have more coverage with certified zoning technician, up to 29 hours a week. There'll be no medical or pension benefits included. What it is, is we will have certified people in land use and in water, inland wetlands, if you will, that will be working part-time for the town. We'll be contracting with them, but we won't be paying their benefits. And we're already negotiating with individuals to step into those various positions. We'll still have a part-time zoning enforcement officer and a wetlands agent. Total cost there is $34,944. Training for part-time staff to become certified is estimated at $3,000. And again, all of these things are new, improved, and we're looking to the future. So a lot of the, what I call the nuts and bolts, still need to be worked out. General Government Boards on page 18. Open Space Land Acquisition Fund, $27,500. And again, that's looking to the future to purchase development rights for various properties that come available. Building Department. To increase the hours and salary for the building official would be $6,426. An increased salary for staff, $3,590. All right, page 21, Fire Protection. One of the things we wanna do is preserve recruitment and retention programs. Increase in basic services. Now, what that is, is for the various fire departments, their increase of electricity, fuel, telephone training, et cetera. It's like the rest of us at our own homes. You get your gas bills when you gas up your car, your electric bills, et cetera, et cetera. It's the same thing with the fire departments. Overall increase would be $12,890. Public Safety on page 23. There's two options that we're looking at. One option would be an increase of $98,318, and that's coverage for 24 hours, seven days a week. Another option is, a second option, is an increase of $3,760, and that's to maintain the current coverage and payroll. Highway on page 24. Requested was to add a 10th driver, laborer, assistant mechanic with Teamsters benefits. Increase in salary for the current position to become assistant foreman. Again, we're looking to take some key people, move them into some key spots, looking towards the future of the Highway Department. Overall staff salary increase would be $69,609. We added a line for tree removal and maintenance of $50,000. And the issue was, this in the past has been an issue, I know, for previous administrations and Boards of Finance. That was under Public Safety, a tree warden. And we had a volunteer tree warden, but the funds in that line, we've taken out. The funds are gonna go into the Highway Department because he, John Navarro, would be the person that's making arrangements for the tree service. Under Public Health, Recreation, and Welfare on page 28. Northeast District Department Health would be an increase to $9,800. And the reason for that is, NCOG and the Health Department, we get charged based on population. So we're assessed based on how many people we have. Now, admittedly, not all the folks need these services, but that's how it's paid. And again, the Health Department this last year, as you can imagine, has been extremely busy with Woodstock and also other towns. I know our HR Director, Crystal Adams, weekly, and sometimes daily, has been in touch with the Health Department on various things that are coming up. And as you may know, if you've been doing any research on this COVID situation, it changes daily. We get a call from Hartford, and this is what's gonna happen. And then two days later, we get a call, "No, no, we were wrong. This is what's gonna happen." So, again, Crystal's just trying to keep up with this. Libraries. All four libraries combined, we're looking at $15,920. Now, before you think, "God, you're spending a lot of money." Yeah, we are. We also have some decreases. The tax collector on page three, there's gonna be a decrease of $5,500. It's reducing the number of staff. As I mentioned earlier, we had two part-time. Now we have one full-time. So it's more of a benefit to the tax collector in that office. Decrease in Town Hall Part-Time Staff based on a decrease in hours of recording clerk is $4,900 savings. Under Environmental on page 26. Cote d'Neille Hill Contractual Services. As you're aware, there's a number of spots in town that were doing water monitoring and have been doing it for years. Anyway, based on recommendations we got from the companies that have been monitoring water over in Cote d'Neille, they felt it was, we could decrease the testing, and that would save approximately $11,000 a year. Under Redemption of Debt. Interest savings on a highway bond was refunded in August of 2020. K-4 renovation bond was satisfied again last August. We have no continuing disclosure, so that means we no longer have a public bond out there. We saved money on that. So the overall savings for redemption of debt is $98,913. The general government budget, which I just gave you, and again, has not been subject to Prop 46, and the Board of Selectmen have not made a final determination. This was strictly based on what was requested from department heads. It's an increase of $367,295, or approximately 7%. The decrease in debt is $98,913, or a 22.5% savings. So as we pay off our debt, it comes back to help us out. The total overall budget proposal, and again, it's proposal, this is not final, represents approximately a 5% increase or $268,382 over last year's. And as I mentioned, we're currently in the process of negotiating contracts with AFSMI and the Teamsters. I'll entertain any questions? Anybody in this audience here? Yes, yes, Suzanne.
Suzanne, did you come up to show the people at home?
Oh, wait, before you come up, I'll give you a break. Let me do the 10-year, the five-year plan, which I didn't do. Were you coming up to say, "Where is the five-year plan?" No? Okay. Were you coming up to ask me with this? Okay, all right, just asking. Okay. Highway Department, drainage and grinding and paving. This is all the roads that we're doing in town. We're looking at $150,000 in chip sealing and that sort of thing this year that we're in. And Lebanon Hill Road, we're looking at $450,000. I'm not gonna go through all the details. The total for the Highway Department over a period of five years is $2,525,000. Bridges. We have the Butts Road Bridge, Peak Brook Bridge, Hopkins Road Bridge, County Road Culvert Widening, Woodstock Road Bridge, New Sweden Culvert, and East Quocet Bridge. These are over from 2009, the year 2009 to 2018. And they're in various stages, if you will. I know right now, we're working on Peak Brook Road. That's in the process. We're also in the process of the County Road Culvert. The total for the bridges over a period of five years is $3,269,500. Fleet Operations. These are the various dump trucks, plow trucks, loaders, graders, lawnmowers, backhoe, et cetera, et cetera. I'm gonna give you a total over five years rather than break it out each year. It's $1,425,000. Fuel Depot over at the Town Garage with tanks, equipment, upgrade and fire and spill equipment and that sort of thing. It's $10,800 over a period of five years. Transfer Station. We have some DEP mandated changes over there. We also have fencing, railings, repair walls, and paving. Over a period of five years, we're looking at $150,000. As an aside, just to talk about the folks that work at the transfer station. Every year, I get complaints, and I've only been here two years, so quite a few complaints in two years, about the transfer station. My thing is, if, whatever the fee is, get one of the private companies. You'll find out what it really costs to pay to have your trash removed. If you would like to meet your neighbors and be in kind of a small-town atmosphere, get your permit at the Town Hall and use the transfer station. Anyway, again, for the transfer station over five years, $150,000. I think it's a bargain. Under General Government. This is benzene cleanup. Reevaluation, we're going through it now. Fire protection, rescue and EMS. Open space preservation, Town Hall improvements. For many of you, I will mention, we made some major changes to the front of the Town Hall in answer to COVID. You come into the lobby, you've got a service window for the tax collector. You have a service window for the town clerk. People come in, they can make appointments to come in. As you can see, we're meeting here tonight. I'm hoping that we're gonna get back to meetings at the Town Hall. But the Town Hall improvements was a reaction, are proactive for COVID. But also, over the years, I've been told there were concerns about security. This really increases security for the staff that work there. Also, because the general public can't wander in and wander around, people are saying they can get a lot more work done. Because we used to have visitors. And I was guilty. I'd go to get the mail, and then I'd, you know, I'd be gone for, you know, an hour and a half because I visited with people, so. Anyway, it's created greater security and also protection for the Town Hall staff and also for the general public. Crystal Pond Park. This is something we're discussing with DEEP. We have decided, the two towns, Eastford and Woodstock, with the Commission over there, that the Trout Pond, which hasn't been used since that property's been acquired by the two towns, it was a matter of repairing or breaching the dam. And all three of us, the Commission and the two towns, have agreed to breach the dam. So again, for planning purposes, engineering purposes, et cetera, that's gonna be an expensive proposition. But once done, we're not gonna have to worry about it. That's something we're addressing slowly but surely. It's not gonna be done this year, but it's something that both towns are very aware of. Anyway. The total for the five-year plan is $9,402,800. This is intended to anticipate the future needs of the town. It's not a commitment. We haven't set money aside. It's just a multi-year project for what's best for the town, looking ahead. So, that said, Ms. Suzanne, would you care to join me?
Thank you. But I'd just like to make a comment first about the presentation materials for the Selectmen's budget. I was very disappointed this year that the columns that show dollar increase/decrease and percent increase/decrease do not have any valid numbers in them. It made a person, a layperson who's looking at this, it's very difficult to just keep going back and forth with your eyes to see, "How much was the increase? What's the percentage?" And I don't know what the problem could be, but I had an earlier copy, so I thought tonight, the copy might have those numbers filled in, but they still don't. So I just wanted to say I was disappointed with that. I have two comments, actually. One. I'm curious about the ambulance service. I didn't think we had that many hours of coverage now. And you're proposing going to a 24/7, which I think is great. But I don't know, is that enough money, $100,000? It doesn't seem like we have half-coverage now. Do we?
It's, we're gonna have to share the mic.
Yep.
No, again, as I mentioned. No, I'm sorry, we won't share it. As I mentioned, there's two options. And one was more expensive than the other. And it's the whole thing that many times people think, you know, "It'd be great if we had 24/7." So this has not been worked out yet.
Okay, but you're presenting it as a 24/7 cost.
No, that was one of the options.
Yeah, it's $98,000 in the budget.
Right, but that was one of the options. Let me go back. Here's your note.
I just didn't think that $98,000 would give us 24/7 coverage.
I think it was more than 98, I think. 24/7, yeah, the 98. Now, that's the 98,000, you're correct. And that's what they came up with.
So what kind of coverage do we have now? What are their hours at the firehouse?
I believe it is just during the day, and I believe it's five days a week, and I may be wrong.
It's 102 hours total during the week.
102 hours total, okay.
And to go 24/7, we would need 100 hours.
To go 24/7, you would have to add another 66 hours.
Okay, really? For just one person to be there, not two? Two people?
Correct.
I have to do that math, because I don't get it, but, okay. My other comment, again, having been the recently retired registrar, I was a little bit shocked to see their their request this year. We're going into a municipal election, and the last municipal election year, the budget was about $21,000. And they're asking for, I don't know what, $34,000, $35,000, $36,000, whatever, a lot of money. And I do understand that COVID could be a factor, but I don't think it will be, which is probably maybe a place that money could be cut and hope that it isn't a COVID election. I did just hear today on the internet that the governor has extended the ability to use an absentee ballot until May 20th or something like that, which means our budget referendum, I'm assuming we're having one, will be able to use absentee ballots. But if you look at our statistics for how many people vote in a municipal election versus a gubernatorial versus a presidential, you're talking... versus a gubernatorial versus a presidential, you're talking a very small fraction of the number that vote in a municipal. So I can't imagine that we would have a need to move voting to the school again until maybe the next presidential, only because our facility, whether we have COVID or not, our facility, especially since our number of voters has increased dramatically, is not really equipped to have that many people pass through in the number of hours. So I think that's a consideration for the next presidential, no matter whether, you know, whether it's, it won't be COVID, I can tell. But, so I'm just saying that I think that's a lot of money in the budget, and I don't think we would ever need anywhere near that much to even to hold a COVID election because we won't have very many voters coming in person. So I'm sorry.
Suzanne, I just want to remind you that the, this is proposed, this is the request that we got. This may not be the way we're going. And again, the Board of-
...any opportunities to speak, so, you know.
Okay, no, 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 it's fine, I, okay. All right, anybody else in the audience or on the board? No?
Are there any Zoom questions, comments? Okay, no questions from the Zoom audience, participants? Okay, I guess not, thank you, Jay. At this time on the agenda, we also have if there's any additional comments from the audience, or any additional comments from the Zoom participants. Hearing none, I guess we go to any comments from the Board of Finance.
Yeah, you have any comments?
Just looking through the Board of Selectmen's budget, it looks like it's about a $100,000 increase.
Yeah, could you, I'm sorry, could you come up here just so that people at home can make sure we have everyone here with a question or comment? Thank you.
Just to answer the question, I was reading through the notes as we were talking, Jay. It looks like it's about a $100,000 increase in EMS services to cover the additional hours over this year, so a $100,000 additional, not total.
Thank you, Jay.
No, not good. Michael? Brad? Nothing?
Good evening, I'm Roy Bradrick, the person who has offended the Board of Education and the Board of Selectmen at the last meeting. I criticized each board for giving a budget to the Board of Finance, a proposed budget was unrealistic. And it's unrealistic because Woodstock is blessed or cursed with something called Prop 46. And no matter how valid some of the budget requests may be, we are limited to what we can spend. And as it tends to be, the Board of Finance catches the football and now has to make a determination as to what is going to be taken to the budget referendum. And this is a public hearing, and I call to the public to let us know what we should do. And do we tax to the max? Do we go to the top of the number that we can use for Prop 46? Or do we do, as we have done this last year, kept it something less? The question comes down to, how much do you want to pay in taxes? Do you want a 0% increase? Do you want a 1.6 mil increase, which is the theoretical maximum, or something in the middle? And that's the purpose of this hearing, and I invite everyone to respond to us so we have a clue, as we do at deliberations, and we cut the numbers that we have to cut for both boards, to come up with something that's realistic for the town. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Roy. Any other comments on the Board of Finance, and then we'll present the remarks from the
Mike Barrett, the chairman. I'd like to thank the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen for their presentations once again. As Mr. Bradrick mentioned, we have a limit, not by our choice, it's something that's been in effect for 40 years now. And that limit, this year, as calculated at this particular time, is $664,799. As Mr. Swan mentioned, there was some savings in the debt service. So even with that added to it, and what the request made, the you people this evening was presented to you, came to a total of $1,760,672. So we have about 41%, 42% of that available. So my suggestion is that both the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen go back and chop into pencils with that in mind, and then we will fight our way through some agreement next Tuesday night to set a final recommendation to put to the taxpayers. Again, that will be not the final. You have the final say. That will be the board's recommendation, what we come up with next Tuesday night, which will be followed by the annual town meeting on May 4th. And that will be followed by hopefully a town referendum on the 11th. If in fact the budget we put forward is not passed, then we'll start again. And I can guarantee you, whatever it is, if it doesn't go through the first time, more than likely, it's going to be cuts the second time, and they'll be deeper. That's all I have to say. If anybody has any questions, I'd be willing to answer them the best I can right now. If not, look forward to seeing you at the budget meeting next Tuesday.
I think we have a question.
Oh, we have a Zoom question also? Okay, first I'll take Megan's, go ahead. I did call on him. Yeah, okay. All right, we have a Zoom question?
Yep. Can you hear me?
I can.
All right. This is John Delugos. And I just, you know, every year when I go to these meetings, the Board of Finance always says, well, there's nothing we can do. We have to chop these budgets. We have to chop education budget, we have to chop the town budget. Quite frankly, I just want to remind people that you folks are leaders in our community. Some of you have been on the Board of Education that are now on the Board of Finance. You know how harmful Proposition 46 has been to our children in this town. We put on the back of our children, every year, we have to make cuts to sports programs, we have to get by with fewer paraprofessionals and so forth. Every single year, it has to happen because of Proposition 46. And I've asked people on the Board of Finance in previous years, couldn't you do a better job than Proposition 46? Isn't there a way so you don't have to go to a lawyer every damn year and spend money? And there's been agreement, and yet nothing happens. So I'm asking the leadership of Woodstock, everybody on every board, our selectmen, have some leadership and talk about how we can make Proposition 46 a little bit better so we're not putting it on the backs of our children, okay? Some of us have had firsthand experience with what that's done to the school budget, and I just wanted to get that out there. And I challenge you all, this year, a lot of things are changing after the past year we've all been through. This year, let's see some leadership step up and say, here's a better way to do Proposition 46. We don't have to do away with it. We can still be frugal, and we can do the best job with our budgets, but let's fix it so that we're not constantly chopping ourselves off at the knees and hurting our children. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. Just as a point to that comment, that is not within our purview to make changes to Proposition 46. That's something that was voted in, like I say, over 40 years ago by the taxpayers, those that are so passionate about Proposition 46 and the restraints that it causes on the budget process, has an opportunity, as some of you know, it's been attempted in the past, but all you have to do is start a petition, get out there.
Can I, can I, can I just say, I called on you-
Same way, to sign that petition and put it to the town to be voted on. But right now, as Proposition 46 is written, we have a limit as to what we can spend. I'm sorry, that's what we have to follow. Thank you. All right, one more time, John. Go ahead.
I'm just saying, as leaders in our community, not in your elected position, but as leaders in our community, people listen to you folks, and that's where you do have the opportunity. You're citizens, but you also have an elected position. You can get to work on that, all of you. And honestly, as leaders, I expect it to come from you folks as well. So I'm asking, I'm just one of the public, I'm asking you, as leaders in our community, get to work on it. Do better for Woodstock's children. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, again, as, and Roy, we've known each other for years. I think we respect each other, I think we're friends. That said, no, seriously, I understand, but as I prefaced my presentation, and this is the third time I presented to this austere group, these were what was given to us. We did not make any cuts. Karen and I in the past, last year, made a lot of cuts and this sort of thing, but I wanted the general public and the members of the Board of Finance to know what the requests were. We, Karen and I, will be going back and doing the math with Prop 46. We also will be meeting with the Board of Selectmen on Thursday to go over this and make our own decisions about what's going to be cut back and that sort of thing. So again, it's not the final situation, final presentation for a budget for this year. So, thank you.
I guess in following up, Mr. Swan, my name is Megan Bard Morse. I'm the chairman of the Woodstock Board of Ed, and we have also presented our budget multiple times to the Board of Finance. And I realize I am repeating something that was said at our recent Board of Finance meeting in regard to how the Board of Education pulled together its budget. While we certainly respect the job of the Board of Finance, and we recognize it is not an easy one during budget season, we also recognize it is not an easy one for the Board of Selectmen either. The Board of Education does have a requirement, it's actually our mission, part of it, to present a budget that actually represents the needs of our school district. I believe there is not a member of the Board of Education that did not realize that there will need to be reductions made to the budget we presented, but we would not be doing our jobs if we did not present the budget as we think the district requires and the district needs. So yes, similar to the Board of Selectmen, we have a fantastic administrative team that met with people in the schools to pull together this budget. They presented to the Board of Education what is needed, and the Board of Education will be meeting on Thursday night to again review the budget. And as we wait for our official guidance from the Board of Finance, which will tell us what our Board of Education's bottom line will be, we will continue to go through our budget and see where adjustments need to be made. And the public is, of course, welcome to attend our Board of Education meeting. We will be meeting on Zoom on Thursday night at 7:00, and you can find our link on the Woodstock Public Schools website. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. So I don't think there's any other business. But we all like to thank Crawler for keeping our ship afloat here tonight, IT wise, and thank you, Mr. Swan and Janice Thurler for making your presentations, and all the members of the Board of Finance and the rest of the town. I guess we'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.